From New Horizons since January, the last we heard was that New Horizons was looking for more funding. Our final and best offer was up north in terms of dollars of what their last and final was. So it was a new offer to them. And so really the key for discussion that I bring to the table tonight is what do we do about New Horizons? And do we then turn the space over to Yentis to seek out an alternative tenant if New Horizons is either not interested? I don't know if that's the right word or if there, maybe a better term, unable to meet what we think is the reasonable rent for the tenancy. And maybe I think we'll start there and then we can transition over to the terrace project.
Is there any opinion within the committee at this point? Or it's?
We did not, we did not meet this month. We had a, or excuse me, in January, we had a disconnect on the date. I think I speak for my colleagues, I can certainly turn it over to Bob and Charlie, that if they're, if, we feel as a committee, I think I speak for the entire committee, that the last and final that was offered to New Horizons represents the floor of what we think would be reasonable for the space. That it's not of value to go lower and that if they can't meet that, that we should seek out a different tenant. I mean, gentlemen, I'll turn the floor over to you. I don't know if that's inconsistent with your.
Is there any, is there any dissent?
Not here, but just for, by way of fact, is there, when did we send it out? I know we communicated the batches by February 1st, but how long has it been hanging? How long have they had?
In excess of 30 days. I can, I can pinpoint that more accurately if you'll bear with me to pull up the email chain. I don't have the date immediately off the top of my head, but I can get to it quickly.
It was before the New Year, right?
It was on or around New Year's, the last communications we had with Mr. Becker.
The December 30th.
That's what I was thinking. I remember being like right before New Year's because I was at that meeting.
I don't see any reason why we can't offer a grace year's plan, I guess, if they have an offer, if they can put the financing together for the price that we would like next year.
A grace year, you mean a year rent free?
No, a year at the level that was closer to or at their best offer, what they can afford now. I think they're valuable, valuable to our community, that's my point. If they don't have the funding, there are many people in the community that rely on the senior center. I think it's positive, I think it's, it is part of what I think is, makes us wonderful. And there, it's important, I think. If it's possible, the difference would be what amount of money, I don't know how much money it would be, it doesn't seem like that would break the bank for an arbor, to extend a year to them to figure out their finances and then see what happens.
What else?
Do you mind noting, I'd be very concerned extending a year of free rent to a tenant in the community.
No, she didn't, she corrected me. She was saying a year at basically their last best offer and then letting it level up.
The only issue, there's other issues, but one issue that is, they would need to invest, I suspect, in fitting out the space.
Well, if they made an offer, so I would assume.
But for one year.
I don't know. I'm just saying it's valuable to our community and it would be, obviously they need time to get the funding together. I know that the Palm and Arco also has funding issues, but I also know that it's a priority for the county to do something with their agents and their own services. And it may well be that there is something on the horizon for the groups in general and it may, it may work out that they can put the funding together. It may work out that they could go elsewhere. But if you made an offer and people are using this service, and you don't, it's not like they have a replacement waiting at the door to provide these same services, there are no places that provide these services. So I don't see the point of a few bucks kicking them out.
See, the federal government has a huge budget. The county has a big budget, the state has a big budget by comparison to the boroughs and all the boroughs have those tiny little, tiny little budgets. Only a fraction of our tax bill comes to the borough to pay for our libraries, our fire departments, our streets, our playgrounds. And in a year where we can't fully fund our own library, I just don't know how, I just don't know how we make that choice to then subsidize another organization where the library services benefit people of all ages, the fire services benefit people of all ages. We have other tenants in the commercial property that are, would benefit from subsidies. And I, so I don't know how we, I appreciate the value of what New Horizons, I've always been an advocate that we find, we allow them to be here so that they would not exist. But when it comes to like the commercial, at least, if ultimately if we start going down that road, we could end up not actually having revenues for other basic services that we really need.
Are we in danger of not paying our basic services?
Can I offer a suggestion?
Well, I have a couple of comments too. I'm Mr. President.
Go first.
So a couple of points for clarification. I do, I disagree, but I'll circle back to that. So December 29th was the last communication that we had with the representative from New Horizons, who was working in negotiation with Mr. Wowko. Mr. Wowko had taken those over from our prior property manager. Regardless of where we land, I think it's worthwhile before we take maybe an action on Monday to turn it over to Yentis to have Mr. Wowko maybe one last time engage with Mr. Becker and see where they're at. One thing that we had talked about and one of the reasons I don't love the idea, I'll see if I can find the delta between the numbers here shortly, of a sort of a year grace period is there was a prior representation that they were ready to move in immediately back in December. And now we've also offered a month's abatement of rent per month to allow them to effectuate repairs. So in a way, they've already sort of gotten the delta between a grace period. The numbers weren't that far off, right? I mean, they've had all of January, we would give them all of February. I mean, I think the numbers are already yet with what they would effectively pay this I do think New Horizons, for the services they provide, could be a tenant worth having in the borough. So before we take any action to relist the property, and I think you have seen the discussion before, it wasn't maybe listed previously in the most effective manner. So presumably with Yentis, we may not, but we may also see more interest than we had previously. I do think it's worth reapproaching New Horizons to give them one last opportunity to see where they're at. But if they're unable or unwilling to come to the table for a deal, then I think it's in the borough's best interests to pursue a different tenant. I think that can be, I haven't spoken with Charles or Bob directly on this, but I think, and I sort of see some nods, I think they would be in agreement with that approach.
I'll tell you what, that building is the single, I think, single biggest asset that the borough has on its balance sheet, in terms of a single asset, not roads in general and fields in general. It's a commercial property that the borough owns thanks to kind of long ago arrangement and ownership of it. And the school district has a possibility of coming to us to buy back at some praise now. So whatever we do with that commercial building, we have to manage it with the best interest of the borough's, you know, financial position in mind, especially considering that whatever the rent rolls are in that building at the time when we might be a purpose, but the school district to buy it, or at a time in the future where we might decide to, you know, triple net lease it out to somebody or sell it.
Affects the valuation, right?
It significantly affects the valuation, you know, what your net lease, what your net income on that building is. So, you know, from my perspective, you know, I like having lots of different nonprofits in the, in the borough. I think we made good arrangements, particularly with that nonprofit, a couple others had to move out of church properties in other places to use civic spaces that we don't charge rent otherwise on, including the Borough Hall. But that building in particular, I look at it as, we're a commercial landlord in that building. As a member of the committee, I've said this always, I don't care who the tenants are as long as they, as long as we get the highest and best use out of the space and we get credit with the tenants who can pay the rent and pay it at a high rate, because that in the armor is going to maximize value of that property. And, you know, decisions are in, and I want that decision, and I've always said this as a member of the committee, to be completely free from any kind of political influence or decisions about what kind of tenants we want in there, other than the decisions we would make as a commercial landlord. And so I think in this case, we've gotten to a point where we've made our final, best and final offer on lease, it was approved by the council to a tenant. I do think it would be fair not to just go, you know, if there has been no communication with them, reach back out to them, give them one more chance, say, hey, we said February 1st, we wanted to wrap this up, we're ready to wrap this up. If they're not ready to wrap this up, we have signed up a new leasing agent to take the, take on responsibility for leasing and negotiation of leases and let them list it. They then list it, see what interest there is in the property and that tenant may be one of the interests of the parties, but I think that would be the best course of action because that would ensure you get a tenant and you're suing around the market.
I mean, I agree with you philosophically as to the building, I think your approach mirrors mine, so I mean, I think that, I like, Charlie, I think that that's the best path forward.
I think this is a good discussion and I know this is the first time the Council Richmond has been part of it, which is new. And you're going to make that offer? We don't have to make it, we're not making any decisions tonight.
Correct. I'm going to have, between now and Monday, I'll have Mr. Wowko. And then he also, I think, wants to get out of the lease negotiation business.
Yeah, I'm sure that's.
But I, since he's carried on the, since he's picked up for Mr. Preble and has carried out the end of the negotiations with New Horizons, I'll have him reach out and we'll have an answer on their position by Monday and then you can work for the next course of action, whether it's signing them up and then starting to effectively move in, or if it's Yentis to consider them as a tenant along with finding other potential tenants.
Can I ask you one question?
Please.
Before we move on, what is the, what is the annual delta between?
I don't know the answer, I couldn't find that immediately, my emails, I apologize. If I, if I were in front of a computer, I could find all those numbers I can't find on my iPhone, I apologize.
Did you email it out or did you, at some point, this week?
I can't, yes.
Wouldn't that be confidential numbers? For the lease negotiation?
Well, we have, we may be offered lease for the public. Yeah, I have the number.
That's why we're having this discussion here in front of everybody.
I've had what we've, I've had what we've asked for. I have those numbers. I don't have the delta numbers.
Okay. If you could share that with at least the council members.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You know, before we meet Monday, I think that would be helpful to understand what that is, just in terms of an annual number. And that will be that. Let's move on. You want to talk about library terraces? I know you have someone here.
I do, I'll actually turn it over to Mr. Brower to talk about, well, actually, belay that. We have the, the lowest bidder has come in on the library terrace. The winning bid for the construction project is a bid of $243,445. They have added alternatives, which I'll ask Mr. Brower to take the floor to discuss, one of which is a new door. The two alternate components of the bid are fairly de minimis pricing, additional steps of the seating area at $3,800 and a new door at $4,900. I want to hear Mr. Brower's thoughts on the design, especially of the door elements. We also, related to the proposed door, I do have two letters on the table from representatives from the Girl Scouts, both Diane Bunny Nardi as well as Kathy Locker Moulton from the Girl Scouts opposing the door. And really, I can read these into the record, I'll certainly submit these for the record. The gist of their concerns is security risk associated potentially with the door and adults transiting through the space to the library passageway where the restrooms are, when they're having either Girl Scout troop activities or Boy Scout troop activities. And I think legitimate concerns that they've raised and flagged regarding the requirements of their volunteers and getting their volunteers cleared against just random adults walking in at times when activities could be taking place and then sort of, I get the sense from their concerns they're flagging, being worried about predators or people who might find their way into the community who might not have the children who use those spaces best interest at heart. So with that as a backdrop. And one thing I'm particularly interested in the door, is it a design element or is it an ADA access requirement?
No, it has nothing to do with ADA.
Okay.
Thank you, that was an excellent lead in to this, saving a few minutes of explanation. There were two slightly different reasons for the two add alternates when we did the design drawings. In the, in the case of the door, and here you see it, in, in just a little background, the, the concept of this door is that we would take an existing window opening and just cut it down to the floor level of the new terrace and in the resulting opening, put a door in a transom that would match the style of the existing doors into the Girl Scout room facing Windsor Avenue and the Allegiant Hall on the other side of the building. The reason why that was done as an add alternate was simply that at the time that the design drawings were being done, there was not a definitive decision made by the borough about whether the door should be in the project or out of the project. And when that happens and we have to continue to complete the drawings, the, the normal thing for architects to do is to say, well, that's easy, we'll put it in as an add alternate and you can make the decision later while we're now there. It was purely a function of the pros and cons of having that access. You just heard some of the, the negative reasons for it. There were counterbalancing positive reasons to do it. And now the decision needs to be made.
Could you elaborate on some of the positive reasons?
Well, it was, it was the, I guess, the reciprocal of the negative reasons, it's greater access, being able to go in, take advantage of the toilet rooms and that kind of thing. So it had to do with the same facilities, it's just, you know, one, one aspect of it sees it as a plus and the other sees it as a minus.
Is there a reason that the door can't be secured from the inside to prevent access during, during events?
Absolutely. I mean, the hardware can certainly be manipulated however you want it to, to do that. I think the other negative in my mind to it had to do with how the terrace will be used. There was thought that having tables above the library wall, you know, for casual dining, for recreation. Once you put this doorway in almost in the middle of that wall, that starts to limit your flexibility of being, of being able to do that. Not to an enormous degree, but somewhat.
And the terrace, as it wraps around the rear of the building, does not connect with the rear door, is that correct?
Well, no, the terrace, this terrace does, does come back and does go far enough to capture that other, that rear entrance.
Okay, so there is a, there is a great door entrance that we can't see as well.
Yeah, there's one, and then of course, there's the front entrance to the, to the Girl Scout room, which is.
But that's not connected to the terrace?
Well, yes, it is.
It is, I'm sorry, it's in shadow.
Yeah, it's in shadow.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, so that would mean there would be three doors able to access the terrace at great?
That's correct.
If we chose this option.
Right.
May I ask a question?
Sorry, you want to finish?
I was having, start talking about the other.
All right, let's talk, finish talking.
Just a question about the door. In terms of the plan view of this project, why is the door located, say, at the third window from the, from the north rather than, say, the second door from the south? The second window opening from the south? Or some, some other location?
It's, I wouldn't say it's completely arbitrary, but it's pretty arbitrary. There was no, there was no definitive functional reason why it was this opening or that opening or that opening. Yeah, that's where we put it. It could be any, any one of the windows.
And that decision would be made when actually Rachel?
When the guy's sitting there with the saw ready to cut it.
I am not a system design committee.
I mean, you know, really, and I said it facetiously, but sure, I mean, the, the final decision doesn't have to be made until the opening is going to be cut. Probably the sooner the better, just because.
And I just would say to council that if we do elect to that door decision, that that be thought about very carefully, we ask the architect to think for the reason for that.
Maybe a decision we don't have to make, but we'll.
Right. Right.
All right. And the questions about the door in particular.
Actually, a question about the other door, because it was in my mind. The door, I remember Bunny being on the phone during an earlier meeting, we talked about this a little bit, but I, I recollect, you were baldies, and it's, look back, the parking lot side, the door, the terrace wraps around and you can access that door that's on the back of the building.
Yeah, there's a stairway now that goes up to that door. That stairway would be replaced with a new stairway that goes onto that little tail of the, of the new terrace, which then accesses the door.
And that door goes into what, what's currently the kitchen, right?
That's right.
Now, is there a way to go through the kitchen? Is there a foreseeable way to go through the kitchen to access the bathroom to that touching the Girl Scout room?
Not, not without doing renovations inside the building.
Is there a structural reason why you couldn't subsequently do that? I mean, cost, yes.
I'm sure, I'm sure there's not a structural reason why. I mean, you know, we, we always talk kinds of that scope creep, you know, these things have a way of growing and growing and then you're sitting with a big, no wonder you had you got there, you know? Is it as easy as cutting a doorway? I don't, wouldn't want to say that off the top of my head without going back there and having to look at it. I'm sure it's doable.
This door design element will be in the next piece. If we strike it now as an add alternate, clearly there would be a different cost, but this could be added. Am I incorrect that this could be added anytime? You know, might have to shut down a part of the terrace if we wanted to revisit a door in two years, three years down the road.
Yeah, once the construction's done, I mean, that, that piece is fortunately really independent of any other construction. It's adjacent to it, but it's, none of the other construction is dependent on it happening in any kind of sequence. So it could, it could be added on whenever you like. And any of the openings too, could be done at any time.
All right, let's talk about the steps.
Now, the logic for doing these, these, this rear portion of the steps, the southern portion of the steps, was a little different than the rationale for making the doors an add alternate. This was not a case of we couldn't decide. I think there was general agreement of everyone who was designed, involved in the designs of the terrace, that, that it was advisable to have the second set of seating back here. We made that as an add alternate entirely, you know, in the possibility that if the numbers are coming in high and we had to find a place to save some money out of the project, that would be a place to save some money. And it was interesting because in, in the bids that we got, there was really quite a large range in what the value of those steps was. The, the good news is the lowest responsible bid, you know, which is the contractor we're talking with now and who's going to do the work, he has a very relatively small premium to, to put those into the job, it's just some thousands of dollars. And so I think that, that in my mind is a no-brainer, to get a part of the project, put it into the scope as it was originally conceived and just to move forward with it. Those steps are fully documented, they're, they're part of the construction documents and it is just a seamless step to just make that as part of the overall construction.
Thank you. I think you have specific questions about the steps, let's do that now, but I just want to lay out, I think we have the consideration of the resolution coming up after public comment to, you know, be a motion and we will discuss in detail whether we want these or not. So let's save that for then. So I would focus just so much just specifically on the garden, give it details up if you have any questions.
I do not, I think, I can refer my colleagues.
I get, I think a couple people asked some targeted questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else for properties? That's all I have on the agenda.
Let's address.
That's reasonable, because we take that as an agenda item on Monday.
That's the agenda for Monday.
And then we will meet as a committee, the third Thursday, February and the third Thursday of each month, moving forward.
Eight p.m.
Eight p.m.
Okay.
Third Thursday.
Third Thursday, eight p.m.
As a recurring?
Yes.
The, the 18th of this month.
Thank you, it's up.
All right.
It's up, yes, I'll have it.
Building and zoning, Council of Westport.
Thank you. As a leader, council members, Building and Zoning Committee did meet this month. We discussed the request from members of the 200 block of Marion Avenue to implement a two-hour zone on their block. The reasons are similar to many other neighborhoods and many other blocks in the community that have requested two-hour zones in the past. Just bringing forward some work that the ad hoc parking committee did in 2015, I summarized one, two, three, four, five, six, six points of, that I think were points of agreement among that committee that we, that we spent in a long, in a, in a long meeting with the public, when members of the Conway community or Dudley, Dudley community came to make this similar request. And I'd like to go through this with everyone in regional valley and make sure that these are still goals that we would consider reasonable common ground among all members of the council. So the first one is to ensure ample on-street parking on the roads of the borough and fulfill the parking requirements of our zoning code. Does everyone agree to that? To prioritize on-street parking for our residents, their guests, our business owners, their employees and their customers. Agreement on that?
Would you say it's in that order or?
I would say it's basically in that order, residents and guests, business owners, their employees and their customers. Yeah.
Okay, it's in a sort that addresses commuters, sorry, I was.
The third, we'll get to that. The third item is to pilot the expansion of our two-hour parking regulations by zones to give our residents the best opportunity to park as close to their homes as possible and to distribute more evenly any extra parking demand caused by local businesses, special events and commuters. And now, I say to pilot because that's basically what we've been doing ever since the two-hour zones were created, we've been piloting the expansion of two-hour zones. And I'm, I'm suggesting that we might continue piloting two-hour zones. Now, we understand that there's this problem of the toothpaste tube. When residents of Conway get a two-hour zone, it squeezes the people who are parking on Conway or Dudley, who don't have permits, off to some other area of the borough, potentially creating a problem.
And it's an all or nothing.
And it's an all or nothing. And then that creates a kind of a feedback loop for us. And in fact, well, I think my philosophical difference with the idea of having some of our hiring at, at great expense, a planner who could survey and come up with some sort of studies, is that we actually have an implementation plan that we're in the midst of doing and we're getting feedback and we're evaluating that feedback and we're responding to it and we're solving problems as we go. So the, the perspective that some of us have is that we can begin to regulate parking as we have been for many years in areas that need it, require that attention, and solve problems as we go, in kind of a piecemeal fashion rather than sort of one grand, all or nothing solution. Because then we'll have, inevitably we'll have some problems anyway and will have to be solved, but in this way, we're sort of taking small bites at it and solving problems as we go. So in this instance, we have residents of the 200 block of Marion Avenue who are pointing to a concern they have that they don't have adequate parking for their, or their perceptions they don't have adequate parking for their, for themselves. And so we can respond to that by creating a two-hour zone and they should then, we'll then find out what the capacity is of that block and if that creates problems somewhere else.
I actually think you have some difference of opinion at this point in particular. And to, to, to wit, I don't think, so we, we hear the residents' concern and I think the concern is that there's not enough parking. The question though is at what time of day? And I think one of the comments that comes up a lot is, there are commuters who will park there when I get home from work and I have to find somewhere to park. That's, so for that, a two-hour zone that prevents people from parking there during the day is actually the wrong policy response and might actually be making the problem worse. So the reason I think we should, in general, whichever committee ends up addressing it, bring in some outside expert in parking policy, one, to actually help us figure out how to measure parking supply and demand, because we don't do that today, you know, other than a very small sort of test pilot, really educated do it for a particular use case where we have to figure out what the, where there's too much demand relative to supply on the street, to help us scope what the problem really is. But two, to suggest for us, like, what is actually the right policy response? It might not be a two-hour in the day zone, it might be a, hey, you can't park here overnight unless you have a permit. And I don't think we have the expertise on any of our committees to really know, like, what are the options out there, what's worked, what's not worked in other municipalities? And that would be why you bring in somebody outside to kind of give us that advice.
That's very good, actually. But the notion of creating two-hour zones everywhere, you feels like it's sort of a one-size-fits-all and it's, it may, it may be overkill.
It may not even be addressing the problem.
Well, so, so actually, I agree with part of what you're saying. I, I agree with you that it, that it may be overkill. I do, I don't agree that it won't address the problem. I think it will address the problem because it will prevent anyone who doesn't have a permit from parking on Marion Avenue. So therefore, the rent. So therefore, the residents of Marion, Marion Avenue will be happy.
During the day.
So who, so, so who's not going to be satisfied with that result of instituting two hours on Marion Avenue?
Well, I mean, possibly the people in Rockland, right? Because if, if the problem that the people on Marion Avenue are really having is people parking in their, in front of their house on the shoulders when they're getting home from work, then if you're, and, and the street's relatively empty during the day when the commuters might be there, and you put a two-hour zone there, you're not necessarily, you're, you're partially solving the problem of the shoulders on the 200 block of Marion. You're doing it in kind of, in a way that might not be the best way to do it, because you might be able to solve it with another arrangement on that block that doesn't push all the commuter parking during the day onto another block that doesn't have a two-hour zone.
Okay, so, so the, so then the issue becomes the commuters. So let's go through the rest of these principles, because I think, I think that this is, the emphasis is then it's on, we're concerned about the commuters. So to maximize, D is to maximize on-street parking capacity on every public road when providing a space does not present a hazard to public safety. That would just be a general principle, I think that's something Public Works is already thinking about working on. E would be to require large apartment buildings with parking facilities to be primarily accountable to their tenants' needs for parking. So we know, for example, that there are large apartment buildings within the borough who have parking garages, that they're leasing the space at $200 a, a space. And meanwhile-
Not, not to the residents.
Not to the residents.
Not to the residents.
But also, or, no, or they might lease them to the residents for $200, but the residents would rather get a dollar parking permit at the borough office and park on North Narbuth Avenue.
Sorry, seven.
So for a dollar, rather than paying $200 for parking. We, I, I think that we in Narbuth might want to shift the burden to the property owner in that instance, to provide parking for their tenants, if the parking's available.
Right.
Yeah, where, where the buildings have available.
I'd also disagree with that one. We can, we'll have a much longer discussion.
We could do that in our committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then lastly, F is to, and I'm, so, so we've got a, we've got two out of six so far where we don't have total agreement, that's okay. F, the last one is to enable the use of regional public transit and increase foot traffic for our businesses by, by providing commuter parking permits only, provided only when our on-street capacity is more than sufficient to meet the needs of our residents. So I, so I kind of, back to the point you were making about Rockland, perhaps the problem spilling over to Rockland. If we solve the problem for Marion, the commuters who are currently using, Marion might then want to go to Rockland. But we, in the way some of us see this, is we don't have an obligation to commuters. We have a desire to provide parking to commuters because we know it's good for regional transit, and that it's the right thing for the environment. But our first obligation is to the residents, and our first obligation is to make sure there's ample parking for our residents, easy parking on the street for them. And we know we have the capacity for that. And I, so I, so I don't see the harm in a piecemeal approach, continuing to pilot zones that exclude commuters. And as we discover, and we, we have these counts, the office is now making traffic counts that include each and every block of the borough. If you, with, with a few surveys, you begin to see that actually certain blocks have capacity and certain blocks don't have capacity for it. And then you can see which zones have capacity. If we choose, with Donald Shoup's number of 85% being the limit of which you'd want to be before we start-
Just generating traffic.
Yeah, where we then see it's generating traffic, then maybe we know that if there's 40% excess capacity, we could lease out, we could sell X number of permits for commuters in that zone.
So to speak, where you would take applications and then kind of fanning out from-
Right.
-the train station, you would fill your spot by random aside.
And then there's a kind of double benefit for borough residents. Not only are we making sure that every borough resident has the parking they need, we're then getting revenues from providing parking to commuters, which are good, for whom car, parking is costly anyway. If they drive to center city, it's costly, if they park in the septic lot, it's somewhat costly. So we could provide a modest, very minimal-
We're not, we're not talking about dollar permits or-
Yeah, not, no, not dollars, not talking about dollars at this point, but, but to an outside person who might want to park in the borough, you could provide a modest and affordable commuter space, if and only if the commuters have their, their ample parking. So that's, those are the general principles. I, I think our committee came around to the perspective that we would be, we would favor the implementation of another two-hour zone on Marion Avenue, and would ask the, the council to consider that kind of an ordinance in the future.
Do you plan to introduce such an ordinance?
Um, well, if, if, if council members are agreeable to that, I think we could introduce it online then.
Are we talking about the two-hours zone?
Two-hours.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay. I think I see some nodding.
I, I just wanted to go back to say, I think that one of my concerns is B, where the last, the last one is customers. So there are two things I want to say. One is that there are people in the borough that live in the borough and also work in the borough, so the commuters as well as residents. And the other thing is that if you're a customer and you want to drop your dry cleaning off or you want to use the laundry mat or something like, you need to have parking nearby. You're not going to walk through the streets with your loads of wash, or you're not, I mean, just like on the level here, I would like to see something done with the downtown parking so that it's easier to go and shop at our businesses with your car.
This is, this is specifically intended to address the two-hour zones within the residential parts of the borough.
It just doesn't say that.
It's going for two-hour zones. This has nothing to do-
In the borough, it says, it doesn't narrow it down.
Well, they said, there are parking meters and parking lots within the overlay area.
Sure, I mean, the zones are on the interior area.
Non-commercial parts of the borough.
Yeah, so I would think that works.
Definitely. And that's a, and that's a kind of another, it's a, it's another category of concern, which I think the Public Works Committee is actually beginning to implement ideas in parking control that will include parks, some parking lots shared, some private sharing agreements.
Do we have any update on it?
Maybe Charlie have an update on that?
The sharing of the, the surgeons' lots.
I don't have information.
I have information.
You do?
Yes. Purely on, on another matter, I am speaking to Mr. Walco, he is getting in contact with a gentleman who owns the surgery center, and the person who manages that specific property here in town. And there were some fine items in the agreement that was put forward originally that Mr. Walco felt needed to be fine-tuned. They were going to wait till after the holiday, and Mr. Walco is getting back in touch with the owner, the owner, the manager, property manager, to get it back on track.
Moving forward.
Yes.
So, so I, so there's just one other comment just occasioned by Charlie's idea of the overnight parking. He said it could be, it could be that if we didn't allow overnight parking anywhere in the borough, we'd find out that there are a lot of people using the borough, who don't live in the borough, using the borough to store their cars. And, you know, we hear that a lot from residents, that somebody came and parked their car while they were on their honeymoon or went on a cruise. So, so that's a thought for future regulation, probably just not allowing overnight parking on the permit anywhere. Anyway, there's no more from the Building and Zoning Committee. We won't go through our goals for 2016 as we did at last year's meeting.
We did that, yes.
So thanks, Mr. Walco.
Got it. Economic Development, Council of Richmond.
I would like to ask the other members to think, say, would like to set up a meeting for prior to either next Monday's meeting, if that's possible?
I could call in on Mondays. I have, I have family obligations that take me right to eight P M.
How about for Wednesdays any better? Like if we did it before the caucus meetings?
I could do standing meeting, yes, Wednesdays. And I could do Monday, I could, I could join in by phone, anytime after 7:30. That's my schedule. She was saying standing meeting before the conference meeting.
Okay, sure.
So that would be Wednesday, let's see, the next one is March. So we'll do that.
At seven, what time, do you want to call the meeting for?
The seven, good, um?
Sure.
Okay.
You want to do seven?
Yeah.
Wow. And I would just suggest as you get a handle on the agenda as it grows and shrinks month by month, and feel free to move it to 7:30 as needed, like if it feels like it's going to be shorter.
Yeah.
There's no other city that that-
There, there may be, we're, we're just getting handled. We have to clean up from 15, and as I said, Mr. Henderson and, and others have to come into the room and speak later.
For now?
But for now, it's all you.
All right, ad hoc succession.
There's no one here.
No update, thank you. All right, moving on to section four, announcements informational. Is this made? Yes? Go ahead, would you get the floor?
Thank you, Council Pressing. As councils are aware, I filed an objection to ordinance 984. I like that this document marked M1. With regard to the objection, please note that it also consisted of veto, but to 984, that's M1. I wrote an opinion for my reasons for the veto, I like that, that mark is M2. You're going to have copies for council, and copies for the public.
Thank you. All right, let's discuss our, our current vacancies.
Do you have three people interested in the zoning hearing board alternancy, which is the position that fills in when someone who are there can't be there, which was prior held to as a person on me. There are three candidates who are available, who have expressed interest in Pryor, Katie Steen, and David Burdo. And for the Shade Tree Commission, we have two positions available. The Shade Tree Commission is expanded by ordinance from three to five members, and Robert McGreenley has expressed an interest in being part of the Shade Tree Commission. We can, council, this is a council's opportunity to discuss, but I would also like to add that we haven't, we can do more to advertise what these positions entail, especially work with the Shade Tree Commission to get more interest from the community. I think Mr. McGreenley is probably an excellent candidate, but we can also do some more advertising which we have not done yet, which may be a more satisfactory approach, in my opinion.
Okay, well, I'll tell you, I, I just was in San Francisco over the weekend, and I saw a lovely banner in a little town about trying to get the, their citizens to participate and get out, and I will share it with you, and see maybe we can try some new methods of advertising.
Have we advertised it anyway? Put it on our Facebook page or Glassed out or anything?
Can't recall. Yeah.
We should do that, or function out.
Do we want to, do we want to give that maybe, you know, 30 or 45 days and then start to set out? We may have additional applicants for the zoning board also.
Would you like to be prepared to consider and vote on these positions at your March business meeting?
Would we set up interviews prior to those meetings?
Would you like interviews? Okay.
I think we, I think we would like to at least-
Do you want to interview the candidates whom you've already interviewed?
Are they applying for the same position that they, they want? I think we should, because we have a new council.
Okay.
Well, now, we were there, but-
I love, we'll do it again. We could flip. Anyway, yes, let's do that. Okay, so may, may it affect both in April.
I don't see it. In a true advertisement and a true expansion of the advertising, if everyone, the applicants-
Realistically.
Realistically.
Let's aim to maybe have our interviews in March. If that's not possible.
Let's, I, if it's possible, we could inter, have, have a section, have a section of the conference meeting in March for interviews.
Okay, okay.
You could vote on, vote on that on the fall and Monday.
If it works.
Because that is, uh-
All right, time, okay.
We'll give a shot.
Yeah, we'll give it a shot.
Thirty-two, thirty-three days from now, we can get the ads out by the end of this week and-
Okay, let's, let's aim to do it. I would have to get them for, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Medrick, do we have any letters that were sent into the borough office that would go into public comment?
Not on them, actually, no.
Okay, I would report, I received a letter from Todd Bressi, from, I guess, in regards his support for ordinance 94, urging the council vote to override the mayor's veto. I also received a similar message from Marion Shakow. And those are all the letters that I got. I don't know if anybody sent me else they want to enter into the public record before the public comment. Forward those to me.
I have heard that. Well, I've already meant, I've already previously referenced them, I have, and I'll be giving them to Matt at the end. An email that came in to Sean from Miss Moulton, and then the letter from Buddy.
Okay, thank you. Yes. You have both of them.
I do, and I'll, you have both as well. I was getting them to Matt at the end of the meeting, because I might as well reference them when we come to the resolution.
All right, so we'll make those part of the, part of the public record. I also got a letter from Pamela Sankar in opposition, Rosemary McDonough in opposition, I will share the, share with you.
Another, I have the seat for location on the agenda, but there was a zoning hearing board meeting this week, that I think should be noted by, by council. It's a new zoning hearing board. One of the things that came up, our council was there to state our position, and seemed to do a pretty good job, but one of the notes is Mr. Duckworth noted that he had done work with Mr. Brown Holt's prior, or was sort of chose not to ask him to be excluded, but began to have somebody on, I think that might have been a case where that would have been a little awkward.
Well, they were moving aggressively through that.
Yeah. And then the meeting, what, Thursday, next week?
Thursday, February 11th, will be the second zoning hearing board meeting, consider us such a special exception.
And we don't have a, an alternate member at this time.
We do not.
So in our, I just want to raise this issue, I'm, I don't know the answer to it. The same thing we had this weekend is that there might be a law that recently said that there must be an alternate member. So I'm not sure if the zoning hearing board should continue to need, if they are, if they fall under that, having to have an alternate member in order to do this.
Let's check with the solicitor.
So let's check that out.
So you've got to use the status.
Right, yeah, that's what we added. Zoom in on that one, right there.
Because you're weak.
Uh, okay. Could I just get a brief show of hands of how many people have something they'd like to say? I know you'll change your mind later, but I'm just trying to gauge the room here. Okay. All right, let's, let's go with our, with our placement and limit, let's start there, and we'll see how things progress. I'll start from the back of the room, and anyone in the last row would like to speak? Anyone in the second, please?
Robin Burnhold's to Marion Avenue. Something that I heard regarding parking in a number of meetings is an assumption that residents are by and large gone during the day. And on my block, you know, which has petitioned for two-hour parking, out of 10 houses, six of them have people at home every day.
Okay.
And the others some days because of working from home at times. So I think it's kind of faulty thinking, and I just wanted to put that out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Second row from the back, moving down. Third row from the back, second row from the front. Mr. Brower, it's recording. All right, Ms. Lonsdorf.
Me, okay.
You can state your name and address.
Deborah Lonsdorf, 128 Chestnut Avenue. I don't think I emailed everyone, but I am, I would like you to not challenge the veto. I think the veto should stand. I think the mayor's given it a lot of thought. And I really want to stress that I completely agree that this ordinance has not been fleshed out appropriately. The other properties have not been considered, and the, and the, those who live on the north side of the tracks, I think are mostly unaware of what's going on. So if you do want to consider this later, it really needs to be much more deeply looked at and not just put in place out of fear about one particular property or for one particular project or, or owner. I think that really does a disservice to the community. I'm not against, not totally against mixed use, and I'm, I'm not totally against an ordinance, but this ordinance is, is not there. So I would urge you to let the veto stand. So I would urge you to let the veto stand.
I need to go first?
Ms. Nardi.
She's going first.
I'm going first. Quickly on the parking. If you want to know how parking works, come to 300 Lockham Avenue.
Give your address.
I'm on Bunny Nardi, 311 Hampton Avenue. If you want to write your name, it's Diane Marie Nardi. For forty-seven years, we didn't have the park. And we have a business up the street that has all their employees park on our street. And we only have eleven homes. And they come in at six, between six and eight o'clock in the morning. So that's rough parking. It's not easy parking. But you get a good lesson if you want to come up and watch, to see how parking works. Thought I would add that, since probably no one really knows how it works up there. My other is the terrace. If I have this correct from Sean, that you'll take it Monday to council to vote on it?
This evening.
You're going to vote?
It's on the agenda for this evening. Not, I can't say that it's going to happen, but if someone moves and puts it on the table, it could vote tonight. It's on the agenda.
Okay, well, that include the door or not the door, or just the bidder, just the contractor?
It doesn't have to, but I expressed it, would urge that we complete the business and make the decision.
Okay, if, all right, I'll take care of that afterwards, let's see how it goes.
Well, this is your opportunity to, so if you want to go on the record.
If you think you're going to go for the door, can I ask you to vote, not to vote on it until the Girl Scouts can talk to our solicitors, the property lawyers and all, so they can direct us how to go?
Well, let me see how the meeting goes, and I'll take that under advisement.
Okay, that's it. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. All right, coming down the front row. Oh, Georgia, if you switched it.
Yep, Georgia Dubois, 111 Price Avenue. Let's see, I have several things that are questions, so I don't want my time to be used up with the answers, so I'll just kind of state the questions sequentially. And first, a comment, I really, it's very refreshing to hear a person on council talk about the value of New Horizons Senior Center, as opposed to the value of money coming into the borough. That matters too, but as you see, there's probably, there might be one or two members of, of the senior center here tonight. By and large, they cannot get out to evening meetings. When they came, they had a very hard time getting their opinions heard because the meeting went so late. So there are those of us who really do value services to seniors in the borough. And I can't help but balance the concern about the finances, how can we afford to rent to the seniors at what is a significant rent? And one of my questions is, please tell us what the final and best offer is from the borough to New Horizons per square foot? Been trying to get that information for a long time. And so when we're talking about spending close to $250,000 on a terrace, that, when I talk to people, most people in Norbert don't know it's happening, and when they hear that it is, they ask, why? What is that and why are we doing it? And I think it's really important that that be put out before we accept bids, because I think, I was around when this was first discussed, and I think the original reason for it has kind of been lost. And so that's another question. I think that residents deserve an explanation of why we're doing that in the first place. I also have a really meta-question about how it's determined who's on the planning commission when it appears that currently there are people on the planning commission, people who have been on the planning commission, who benefit financially from decisions that are made about things like that and other things as well, property owners and all. So I don't know who looks at that and says, okay, what are these people doing on a planning commission where their votes can benefit, if not themselves, if they recuse themselves, can benefit their buddies? So I think that's really important, and I'm hearing a lot of people ask questions with regard to that. And so I'd like to hear those answers. And what else? Oh, and then the $243,000 that was quoted for this, does that include grant money or that's money that the borough will pay? And so those are my questions, and I'll appreciate hearing the answers. Thank you.
All right. In regards to your question about what is the final offer that we made to New Horizons ?
Yeah, I can get that.
We'll pull that up.
I do know it is, of course, available in our right to know request.
Yes, it is.
I know it's a lease.
We've approved this lease, it was a month, it's public document. Let's, let's put that number out there.
So on a half a square foot, you want me to recite the number if this president?
In any way, in any format, and people can do the math, they can backtrack it to however they like.
Monthly, nineteen hundred seventy-nine sixteen for the period of February 1st, 2016 through January 31st, 2019. And equates to roughly $23,749.92 in gross revenue per year. We had a renewal terms, it was a three-year lease with two-year renewals, accounting for the possible buyback from, or the offer solicitation from the lower mayor to buy back. And the first renewal term, which would run February 1st, 2019 through January 31st, 2020, it was a monthly rent of $2,078.12.
Can you just give us the rent per square foot, please?
I cannot, I do not have those numbers.
Okay, I've been trying to get this for like months, and so have other people.
Well, I'll tell you what, Georgia.
That you'll have to request from the president at least.
I did that.
Oh, congratulations. We have the number, the annual rent number for the first year. I will dig around, before I leave tonight, I will get you the square footage and we'll do the division.
It's about, it's about nine fifty a square foot. Which is, which is the lowest we stray from the building.
Yes.
And which, including the space that's shared by the borough.
Thank you. All right, next question about the terrace, and does it have any subsidy? Is there any money coming in, any grant money to support the building of this terrace?
Lower Mary Conservancy has $165,000 grant that uses dollars that the borough is going to spend to build the terrace to leverage projects that'll be done on Windsor Avenue. So there is, there is connection, a symbiosis or whatever, between that project that's going to happen on Windsor Avenue and the library terrace. But the $243,000 plus any add alternates is going to come out of borough operational expenses to pay.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. But it makes other dollars available to us to do things on Windsor Avenue.
Also, in regards to your question about how people get on the planning commission, I think, I mean, they apply and they are appointed by council. Regarding the ethics and people recusing themselves and how that all works, I would refer you to the State Ethics Board and look at their website, because I think they give some fairly detailed advice to those individuals serving about what their expectations are. And, you know, if you have questions, feel free to reach out to me. And I can tell you, one of the things about the ethics board, they don't answer questions from the public if you were to write to them. And they only answer questions from individuals who have been appointed or elected who have a question about what, you know, what decision should I make in a certain circumstance? Once a circumstance has happened, they won't even reply to that individual with a determination that's kind of, they're moving on. You can only ask them about future thinking events.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else moving on to the front row, and then I'll, I'll come back around? Dan?
Sure. Yeah, sure. Dennis Montalvo, 306 Grayling Avenue. I spoke a couple weeks ago in support of the ordinance. I want to continue to support the ordinance. I would urge the override of the mayor's veto. Usually, the mayor and I agree on most things. In this case, not so much. So, and as I would, I would urge you to overturn the veto and approve the ordinance under consideration.
Thank you.
Heidi Boyce, 306 Grayling Avenue. I'm on the planning commission. We worked many hours, many meetings, working out the ordinance, what should be in the ordinance. It's a borough-wide ordinance, doesn't apply to one particular building, it applies to a few buildings that are of a certain age in the borough and that deserve to be maintained. They happen to be civic structures, there are churches that were put into the borough for many, many years ago, and they are significant. I cannot speak as eloquently about it as Todd Bressi did in his letter, and I'm wondering if somebody could read it, if, Aaron, I don't know if you could read it, part of it, or if it could be shared with the public, because it really explains the process to put the ordinance together. It explains that the ordinance does not allow a developer or business owner to come in, take over a property, buy or purchase a property, a church, for example, the Elmwood Church property, and make it into a business for himself. That's not the goal of the ordinance. What the ordinance does allow is for the developer to purchase a property and come forward to Borough Council with plans for what he would like to do with the building. At that point, the borough can review the plans and determine what they do or do not like about the, in this case, the business owner's intentions. So again, Todd, Mr. Bressi's letter from our planning commission was very well-written about the whole process and what we did to bring the ordinance about. And I'm, I highly, very much from the bottom of my heart, wish that council would come back around and vote to support the ordinance. With all due respect to the mayor, I think he's wrong to, you know.
I'm not going to read the letter aloud, because I feel like it would be unfair if I haven't read all the other letters out loud. But what I will do personally is make copies of that letter available Monday night. That's me doing it, not the borough, because I do support ordinance 94. And anyone else wants to bring other supporting documentation, you know, feel free to do so, but I think that's probably the best way to.
Point of order, you did, you did, council did read aloud many long letters from people who objected.
Yes, I'm talking about tonight. I'm talking about tonight, I'm, we're not going to read letters. Let's see. Anything else? Ms. McDonough? All right, I'm going to cycle back, start at the back. Go ahead.
My name is Seth Schuster. I live at 118 Elmwood Avenue. And I said, I don't work, and I would say, I have a hard time finding a parking spot during the day. And a lot of commuters who don't get a spot come right down there. There were three people parked today. A lot of the houses on that side do have fam, young kids. If I would advise people not to buy on that street if you have a young family, because you will not be able to park close to your place if you do not have a driveway. And the further you go up the street, again, you have apartments, those people don't leave during the day. They either take the train or the bus. These cars don't move. And so we're, we're competing with all the apartments along that street, the commuters. And if, you know, a business comes in, it's hopeless. I don't know, I, I would probably say, I don't think I would buy, I would buy a house on that street. And, and that's what I'm going to probably recommend to people if this passes.
Thank you. All right, coming back down the last row, Ms. Fox?
Yes, I would like to, you know, support getting a professional outside parking study. I think that's important. There's too much controversy in opinion about the parking around the neighborhood, and I think we need an, you know, an outside impartial look at the problem. I also agree with Marlene. I think we have to find a place for our seniors. There's a lot of talk about being an aging and placed community, and I think there's a way to get creative about this and allow the New Horizons to be in the school or to find some other home for them. My parents were here in the community for eight years, and they were a wonderful organization, and they really provided much-needed socialization and attention and care. And we can't, you know, it's an hypocrisy to say, let's be an aging and placed community, and then not finding a place for our, you know, for our aging people. I also would like to support Tom Grady's veto. I think that it is very important that when we talk about preservation, we're not talking just about a building, we're talking about neighborhoods, and we're talking about residences. And we're also talking about four churches in a small community. And without some serious parking study, taking the long view, it is spots only. And I think that it's really important that we take a pause and take time and really find out what's going to happen in our community if we allow four businesses and four different churches.
Thank you. Moving down the back row. Second to last row. Go ahead, sir.
Parking problem 212 Marion Avenue. And I just want to support the mayor's veto also.
Thank you. Moving down that, go ahead, sorry, second row from the front. Ms. Lonsdorf, you already spoke.
I know, I have another comment.
I would entertain a question, but.
It's on something different than I spoke on before, but.
All right.
Quick, it's very quick.
Go ahead.
All right, Deborah Lonsdorf, 128 Chestnut. I, I want to support Georgia's, the, the New Horizons. I didn't say it before, because I didn't want to go too long, but I also think it's very important to support our elderly people in this community, and they're kind of not represented in any of our boards or on council. I don't think the money is as important as the people, and I, I would urge you to really take a look at that, because they're, they're kind of all over the United States, a forgotten population, and we don't want to do that in our, thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a question, actually, two quick questions. Georgia Dubois, 111 Price, and I didn't hear an answer to my question about why in the first place are we building a terrace on the community room? I understand that it allows other funds to come in, but I remember the origin of this, and I think it's important for the public to know why that came up and why we're doing it in the first place. And then my other question is, I had asked to see the leases, my understanding at the last meeting was that the leases were all signed, and I was sent the leases, none of them were signed other than Aaron's. And so I don't know if there's, there are newer copies that the public can see. And then it's important that the public also know what the arrangements are for the food bank, and whether that's a sublet with another organization, and that has to be documented legally. So all of that should be made public, and I'd like to hear the answers. Thank you.
Regarding the leases, I believe, the leases that you were sent are the leases that were signed. If the copies that you have don't actually have the executed signatures, there are, there are no changes.
Yeah, there's no changes. You might have gotten the wrong PDF. There's no changes.
So I think you can have confidence that what you have is the document. If you want, you know, Mr. Metrick, he can get you, you know, he should, he gets the ones with the correct file and have the executed signatures. In regards to the reasoning behind this, is there a council member that wants to summarize briefly? We don't have to answer, but, I mean, we had many months of discussions about it, I'm trying to hit a thirty-second.
Just seeing my impression.
All right, just stepping up.
Was on the, built a property committee now for five years, going on five years. This project was underway when I joined the property committees five years ago. The community conceptualized this as a major addition to our recreational facilities, as a, as a gathering place for the community who enjoy, currently enjoy the park, but particularly for people for whom, you know, being in, on the grass is not as comfortable as being, say, sitting in the park in chairs, on benches, on a paved terrace just off the library. So this was conceived of as a place that would be more inclusive to more members of the community who also want to enjoy sort of a passive recreational place adjacent to the recreational facilities. So it always seemed, I mean, I think this continued to have legs because members of council, members of the public continued to support it going forward. And, and I think that's why the borough contracted a very attractive design. I think that's why it's at this point. Heidi Boyce was the property chair at that time, perhaps she could add something?
I think that's a sufficient answer.
Okay.
I think that if you have additional questions, I would ask Ms. Boyce, who is here, because she would just look for more insight. Let's see.
I, I think he hit it on the nose. I mean, really, like, it was conceived, oh, okay.
Fine, that's fine. But feel free to speak to Ms. Boyce. Any other comments? Go ahead, Ms. McDonough.
Rosemary McDonough, 911. I, I'm, I'm just a little struck between the contrast, and I think this has already been said a bit, between what could be a very small lost revenue. between what could be a very small lost revenue for the seniors, you know, when we really want them here, versus the space which I, I'm really not quite sure what it's for, even hearing it. I just put that out, I think the seniors are important.
Thank you. Just could you say your name for the?
Rose Mary McDonough.
Oh, with the, I mean, the address.
No, I know. No, I know.
Yes, you do that, and I missed that. Any other public comment? Go ahead, Ms. Fortner.
Ms. Fortner, four fifteen Conway, and I, I just want to second what I've heard some other people say. I have to say, I always thought the terrace was mostly being built with grant money, now that I hear it's our money. I would much rather we put that money towards a lot of other things, including the Horizons. I really don't get that, as much as I'd like to understand why it's there. I, I'm not sure now why anybody thought that was the right way to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Charlie, as people might bolt while we're going through things, Dennis, Sean, have you been in touch about historic documents? I know that you find some.
Yes, we, actually, Matt and I had a conversation the other day about assembling things that they've been going through. So, yeah, we have, we have connected, thanks, thanks, there's Charlie.
And I'll just say, moving forward, I'm always leaving my options open, I'm really going to resist, you know, multiple rounds. I would, I think it's very important individuals have the opportunity to speak. I know you was going to think of that, one last thing, you know, just like when you walk out of the doctor's office. But in the interest of a meeting that I'm hoping to end earlier and earlier for everyone so that you feel like they can come to these meetings and participate, I'm just going to do one round. So, I just wanted to say that. Moving on, action items, would someone like to make a motion for consideration of ordinance nine nine three?
I will make a motion to consider ordinance nine nine three. An ordinance approving capital project that authorizes a barrel of, or up to ninety-one thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and twelve cents from Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, under the state amortization schedule for the purchase of emergency radio equipment services and insurance approving the core execution of the note, oh, sorry, the twenty-fifteen note and associated documents, obligation to the borough to make payments on the twenty-fifteen note from the funds appropriated from the current fiscal and authorizing ACT debt authorization, ACH debt, I said that the last time, ACT debt, put a period in there, authorization for payments.
Is there a second motion?
Second.
Briefly, we don't have a choice, we have to spend the money, this is an opportunity to have a five-year interest-free loan doing so. And is there any other discussion? We've been over this a couple of times, all right, all in favor of approving ordinance nine nine three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, who answers to you now, it's late. I'll consider a motion to put resolution two six twenty-sixteen oh oh four on the table.
I'll make said motion, one point for clarification, Mr. President. Do you want me to introduce the resolution as drafted, then we'll have a discussion on potential, if any, add alternates?
Why don't we handle the add alternates as a potential amendment to this resolution? So let's put the resolution on the table and then people can, we can vote to amend. Or you could put them all in, we can amend.
Resilient.
Okay, there you go.
The members of the property committee of borough council present the following resolution for a vote and approval. A resolution to approve PNS Incorporated as the lowest responsible bidder to complete the library terrace addition with additional add alternates to include additional steps seating areas, add alternate one, and new doors, add alternate two, and agreed by council.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, let's discuss.
Based on Mr. Brower's presentation, which I thought was good, I think he did, I think it makes, in my opinion, a lot of sense to strike the second add alternate of the new door. I think it's something, it's not an ADA access issue, so there's not a requirement. It's something that we don't lose if we don't do it now. I think these concerns flagged by Ms. Nardi and by Kathy from the Girl Scouts are legitimate. I think you raised a valid point, Mr. President, that, I, I think you raised a legitimate point about, well, could we secure the door? But I see a slippery slope of just, it only takes one person to open it, wedge something in.
I'm already in agreement with you.
Okay, but I, so I see those, I see this as all very real concerns.
We're having two doors.
Yeah, and we can circle back on the door if we see that former function that we needed later on. So I, I think we should strike that, but I, I do like the add alternate of the additional seating area and set there, okay?
Anyone else want to weigh in?
I will say that the property committee and maybe enlisting the reg board and maybe other resources in the future ought to consider how, I mean, one of the reasons this is a project is to support not just passive recreation but also public events, the Wednesday night concert series, Oktoberfest, other events that happen around there. And it would be good to have nearby restroom access without going in the Girl Scout room, without going to the library when the library's closed. You know, I, we have to take a hard look at how to address that in a way that's not disruptive and doesn't run into any of the concerns that the Girl Scouts have expressed. But because it's, I agree with you, it's something we can separate and have as a separate project and consider separately from just a base project and kind of do that.
We should probably actually adjudge to that, the restroom point prior to the summer concert. We, we, we have a good lead time till June, right, if I could, we need a, at least a temporary fix, even as a porta potty sort of thing for this season and then a larger solution for fall and subsequent seasons.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone want to discuss the second add-on, or that's already, it's in the, the motion that's on the table here? Does anyone have a feeling to remove that?
You talked about the steps seating area?
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I like, my opinion, Mr. President, is I like that add-on.
Okay, so if someone would like to.
Just to speak to the two, I agree with Richard about the door, it's not necessary at this time. But the additional add of the, of the steps is for such a nominal additional cost, given what it probably will cost them to build, it's probably just a, you know, a break-in, so it would be very expensive to add later, I think, you know?
What am I, freshen my memory on the additional?
Thirty-eight hundred dollars for the, for that additional concrete to, to make that. We're discussing the project now?
Well, why don't we make a motion to amend it, so if someone wants to do that?
To move add or two from the resolution as we proposed.
In regards to the door?
In regards to the door.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of amending the motion to remove the add-on of the door?
Aye.
Opposed, none, is the motion now amended, includes the stairs but not the door? Let's have a discussion.
Well, I want to say this, but for council members and the public, and I, over the past year or so, I discovered, I've gotten great pleasure and entertainment and knowledge by reading the double of AARP website. And I, unfortunately, I was sent a card a few years ago. And I, George.
Thrown out, thrown out.
And looking at, looking at what that organization offers. And what's kind of interesting is that they have themselves funded a public policy institute on livability, community livability standards, and, which really are directed towards this idea of aging in place. And I think the term aging in place was referred to as, was suggested by someone in the public that we, that we on council refer to it as, that we're hypocritical when we refer to that if we don't fund a senior center. But the, the fact of the matter is, the way the AARP defines aging in place as in, as affordable housing, appropriate housing, good quality transportation, good quality healthcare. That's what makes a community a place that's good to age in place. In addition, the AARP adds that communities that are good for elderly people are communities that are good for people of all ages. And aging in place means that a two-year-old can become a ninety-nine-year-old in that community. It includes bicycles, this is the livability standards, includes bicycles, density, economic development, form-based code, modern roundabouts because more seniors are killed at signalized intersections than anywhere else in the country. Parking, revitalization without displacement, that's, that's referring to unnecessary teardowns of historic properties, road dikes, sidewalks, street trees, and traffic coming. I see this project that's adjacent to the library as complementing our desire to create a community that's more accessible to elderly people, more, really, it's a, it's an amenity that will serve all of us as we age, a place to go and sit under the trees, be in the park. And I think we intend to add over the years more benches everywhere in the community, places for people to stop and walk as they move through the community, and more accessible curb cuts and all the same. This is, this creates an extraordinary destination for people who aren't just coming down to the ball field to watch Little League or to be there for their kids while they play soccer. This is really, I think this is an important thing for gener, that we will be adding and will be, exist for generations and generations. So I'm, I'm very much delighted that we have this opportunity to fund it and build it in our, in our lifetime.
I just have a question, are we approving it as we see it here, including the fencing that goes from the tree, you know, from the one tree?
The guardrail?
Yeah, are we, are we approving exactly what we see here?
I mean, more or less, sands the door.
We sand the door. Because I am, I am a little concerned about the fact that we do a lot of things coming out in this area and that fence and the tree and the other tree.
Which, what specific tree are you concerned about in regards to?
Looking around with being able to stand on that, I'm not sure why, like, on that side, I don't think it's an issue.
I don't think that the tree, in real life, the tree is close enough that you would be able to gain on the fence. Oh, the tree's coming down.
The tree's gone already, the trees come out.
The tree's gone.
Either is that the one, the other, go?
We're taking in the trees.
So what's behind it, so I'm just saying in general, I just would be concerned about the, the fence. And the other thing about the fence is that you can't access, there's no gate in the middle from the stairwell area, not really showing up.
What, I mean, the added steps?
Yeah.
I know, it, there is, it opens, you can get through that way.
Oh, where the seating steps are?
No, that's, that's for seating, no, at the end, there's a little stairway that goes up.
Oh, it can't see stairs. It's like matches that one.
Show them where the stairs are.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Matches, yeah.
That's an opening.
Right, right where it turns.
So, so Dave, actually, Marlene's point, is that, that guardrail handrail you see on this side, close side or the far side of the steps are in the building?
Are you, sorry about these?
This one over here, it's on the, is that on the far side of the steps? So you can walk up, you can walk across this bench and walk up the steps.
Yeah, this is on the right-hand side of those steps, so you can walk up the steps.
Why is this step, this rail here doesn't have those at the other end of the dots, is there a reason for that?
I'm not sure, wait, there's one. Go ahead, Marlene.
The handrails. Yeah, is there a reason why this doesn't have these? I'm just scared.
Yeah, to tell you the truth, off the top of my head, I can't give you a, a, a complete answer. And this was designed now, probably four years ago. I think it was because, yeah, this, this was a concern about going over the edge of the steps, same thing here. Here, you're at the corner of the intersection of the steps, I think that's, that's why.
The only wheelchair access is the front?
Yeah, the existing way, they, is they, they have to access to the terrace.
One point, I know that there was some discussion of root exposure, we talked about porta potties. I'm thinking of the Chet Tyson building, this project, porta potties and root exposure. I know that there was some concern at the end of, I think that sounds odd. But when we talked about removing that tree, we had a discussion about the exposed roots in certain parts of that section of our green space. And then I would just like your committee to take that into consideration and have that maybe addressed or at least put on an agenda to have a conversation, and maybe some assessment of the, of the value of the trees. I would hate to lose more trees.
Yeah, where I can be, so.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion, are we ready for a vote? All right, let me, I will give Richard a second to hop back in. All right, let's vote on favor of approving resolution twenty-sixteen dash oh oh four. To approve and incorporate as the lowest responsible bidder to complete the library terrace with the add alternate of the stairs and without the add alternate of the door, please say aye.
Aye.
In favor, opposed, no, not hearing none, passes, thank you. Consider a motion for adjournment?
I so moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. We will meet again Monday.